Good evening. Time is now seven o'clock. I'd like to call this town and thank the board of select meeting to order. And ask you please rise for a pledge allegiance. A pledge allegiance to the land of the United States of America, and to a republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, free of any injustice or fraud. Thank you, and roll call please.
All right, Peggy. Scott Gardner.
Kevin Cunningham. I proceed to approve the meeting minutes in special from the board's select meeting from 4:10.
There was some corrections in the names that Scott gave us on. Did you get them all, Scott?
Yes, I'd like to pass on a list of the names. So, which ones? One of these was starting with Nelson and Audrey review. You have a proper start of that. And then Ross Shivick and Becky Burke.
Okay. And the only other one was Sean Pearson. Sean, spell it out for me, please. Number one.
In addition to that, let me just find it here. In the section where, section four, discussing act on our proposal for the CGF 8-2, that said that I received a letter of the planning and zoning. I'd just like to amend that, that I would, I received, I would last at the board's select, and as a whole, received an email. So, I read into the minutes, or I read into the mail before the minutes, that you lettered for the run this particular planning and zoning. So, we should probably have a copy of that.
I'd like to read it word for word. Section four, page two.
How far down am I, please?
Right at the top. Right at the top. Scott, received a letter of the planning and zoning. It's a, see attachment one.
But it was an email to all of us, not just me individually.
So, you wanted to say D O S?
Yeah, I think to the board's select. I, I read it to the board.
The last one is in section.
And over the now, I'm okay with everything I just said.
Okay. So, spelling changes and adding the attachment. Anything else?
Correct.
And a motion at this point to accept with modifications?
So, move second.
Call if they will say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I did have another, again, I apologize, I popped this off as something else, but there's a section, should be there, which is public comment. So, I would like to add that in for public comment for tonight.
Excuse me, Paul.
Yeah, I think we shouldn't do that.
I make a motion that we add public comment.
Have you seen one?
I don't know. Second.
Call if they will say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Does anybody here from the public wishes to speak at this time? Microphone's out, where can I start?
Sorry, Joe Sanamano, Mossel, Police Commissioner. We're, what we're asking for, on behalf of the commission, is, the town has allocated $1,000 in our budget for us to have legal advice on what, or anything that we have questions on. And the commission itself has voted that we, we'd like to have that money allocated to us to use, to get some legal advice on our roles and exactly what we should be making decisions on, and to get us more knowledge, all of us that are on the commission, so we're not 100 percent lost on the time. The, there's $1,000 allocated in our budget for it. And what we're looking for is not to use the town's attorney, to use a third party attorney that has nothing, no tie to the town whatsoever, or us, or the chief, or the selectmen, or any, so it's a neutral, neutral advice. So, it's not one side. I'm not saying that the town attorney is not going to do that, but the town attorney was here for the town. So, we're asking, I guess we need at least two of you to suggest to us taking that money and using it for, I guess you want to call it the third, third party, fifth place from a lawyer. That's what we're asking for.
Joe, if you don't mind, I'd like to be able to have a conversation back and forth with this.
You.
I'd like to add this item to the agenda to discuss the request from the board of police commissioners for access for legal funds.
Cool. The, you can put it whatever way you want, though.
Just for discussion. And then when we get to it, if we can ask questions, that would be helpful.
Yeah.
Okay?
Yeah.
Make a motion.
Yeah.
To make a motion to add item four to the agenda for the police commission?
For discussing requests from board of police commissioners to access legal funds.
I'll second that.
Call if they will say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody else from the public wishes to address board of selectmen?
Sean Peterson. I think it's a good idea that they do get separate legal counsel, tell themselves and figure out what they need to know. Sometimes town attorneys aren't the best people. I saw that question. That matter.
Anybody else from the public?
Hello, Matt Rayant, Musa. Town charter question regarding the current budget process. Currently, the budget being brought to public here next Monday is a mill rate decrease despite being a real tax increase. Per the charter, does this mean that it will not be going to referendum, but will be held by town meeting instead?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep. That's the way the charter was written, so we have to follow that process. I would just say that everybody's taxes will be a little different. Some are actually decreasing, some increasing. But because of the way the charter is written, we do have to follow that process. So, for those, I was going to mention this later on, for those who are interested, May 1st, we do have a public hearing, which you can address, whether it's the board of selectmen, or finance, or the board of education, and ask very specific questions and make comments, whatever you like to do. But that's the time that that would occur. And then the next night, the board of finance will meet with a special meeting to discuss if they're going to make any changes to that, to that budget. I'm also going to suggest to this board, and also to the board of education, do the same thing immediately following their meeting on the second. So, in case there's changes, we can make modifications right away. And then on the 15th, it is a town budget hearing here to meet a meeting to set the vote to go forward, and we'll find out from there where we go.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else from the public? Okay. Hearing none, we'll go into, thank my old business, discuss an act on bypass procurement policy for deep aquatic invasive species control grant program. And finally, Teague came forward, we've been waiting for a while. Teague came forward with the actual documentation and all of its paperwork related to aquatics invasion of Musa Pond. So, this is something that we can reapply for every year. As you can see, that the award is $12,000. And it is, once this, now this is executed, we can work together to schedule the treatment. I did meet with the Musa Pond Association last week, and they talked about how they'd like to continue the process. It's a five-year program. They're going to have some monitoring before it starts as to where their hotspots are. They're going to be looking for the treatment to occur. They're saying sometime end of May, beginning of June would be the timeframe. We'll be notifying everybody at that point. And then they go back afterwards and do a follow-up testimony to see how it had worked out. But each year, they'd be looking to process this through the same company. So, that's why we're asking for the bypass procurement policy, because it's staying with the same company for five years.
Questions?
Yep.
Okay. As it had done in the last three years since we did it?
Last time we did it was, was that.
Last time.
And the company that did it, unfortunately, didn't do follow-ups with them. It's hard to get ahold of them. So, that's why they were not happy with that people company.
Mm-hmm. That was almost $30,000 at the time. So, this is 12, or?
With the grant that we're not?
This is the grant for 12. This is Musa Pond Association.
They're putting $4,000 in as well. So, the grant total is 16.
Okay. And that covers it?
Yep.
Now, cover it every, is this going to be?
This is every year. We'll apply for it every year they're looking for, pay to, $1,000 towards it. And to be right on it, it's, it's the same chemical that was used before, but this time they're looking to do the application with monitoring to see how it's working. And then again, every year for the next, well, this is the first year, so it'll be five total.
You don't know what they're going to take with that stuff, though?
It's simple to do that, and we talked about that before. The issue with the mill foil, that's why you don't have anything over 10 horsepower supposed to be in that pond. The mill foil, once you start chopping it up, once you start chopping it up, it then regrows. So, you're actually making it worse. They will try to go around to, you know, clean up what they have at surfaces, and that'll be it. Someone was asking about, what do you do about lily ponds? You can't go in there with a machine that actually rakes it up, because she'll be hitting the mill foil, so the same issue. So, it's, it's a very careful process that they're going to do to go in there and take things out.
No bypass procurement policy for the deep aquatic invasive species control grant program?
Okay. Motion's been made.
I'll second.
Scott seconds. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item number two, the last meeting you have on your minutes, that we talked about having a meeting, but now this is to set the town meeting date for authority for planning a general statute, take two, and let the public vote. We have a bit, an extremely busy town. We got May 1st, as we spoke about earlier, talking about the budget process. You have May 9th, where is later on at the next meeting tonight, we're going to vote on, moving forward with the opportunity for the public to vote on the, going out for bond for the sewer project. So, that's May 9th. May 15th would be the public voting on the budget. So, it doesn't leave a lot, and it really pushes things out a little bit. So, what I was going to propose would be to take a look at the calendar and take a look at May 30th as an option. May 30th isn't bad because it's right the day after the holiday. It's a Tuesday. It still gives us an opportunity to get all the other things out of the way, hopefully, and then move forward.
What time?
I would say seven o'clock, because all our other ones have been accepted. Except for tomorrow, because that was set by the bond council. So, we'd look to get a motion to entertain for the special town meeting for May 30th at 7:00 P.M.
Just before, just, just before, you know, that's actually, vote, vote on it. I think it's worth noting, I mean, obviously, I've already made my opinion clear on where I stand with this. I don't, this is quite great for us. A lot of town folks have spoken about, as you can see in the minutes, against this. The chair of the planning and zoning commission sent us the email that I wrote. Since that time, the planning and zoning commission has also met and has passed a resolution stating essentially that I will void.
I was there.
I think I, just for the records, I would like to add the resolution for the planning and zoning commission to.
It's already in their minutes. It's already been added as an item.
It is in their, it's in their minutes. I, I want to add it to this meeting, just that I.
Well, but you're not, you're not their board, their committees, so why would you add theirs, you know?
It's public information. It's filed. I think it's important.
It's already filed in the town clerk's office as an attachment to planning and zoning.
Fair enough. Fair enough. I just, you know, I just don't, I just want to bring it to light that the public should know.
Yep.
That the planning and zoning commission overwhelmingly, unanimously voted to pass this resolution, which basically says, you board of selectmen, or the town should not, the town should not pursue this course of action. So, that's all I can say.
My turn.
I know it's an oral vote, so we'll let the board decide. This, this is not transparent.
Understood.
I make a motion to set the town meeting date for authority within CGF section 8-2 for 30 May 23 at 7:00 P.M.
A motion by Art. I will second that. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose? Abstain.
Pose.
Pose, okay. All right. Paul, 79 cents. Christopher Hevel, that would be $90.04. C cap auto lease LTD, 90173, and Nancy Orbrieter, 1402.
Make a motion to approve the tax refunds in the amount $1,005.07.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item two, discuss an act on proposed new ordinances, which would be at this point, number 136. So, the fire marshal did reach out to me and explain to me that the town Thompson, Putton, Killingley, Woodstock Coventry, just to name a couple, they have this de-charge service for the fire marshal's office. He drafted it up based on what they had written. What you see in front of you is the draft version of ordinance 136 and ordinance concerning fire marshal required inspection and permit fees. As in, if we were to go forward with this to the town meeting, because that's where, but again, it passed, have. The idea would be not to put in the fee schedule on the side of an ordinance, because otherwise you have to go back to meeting every time we change the fee. But you see that second part of that packet is a list of all the different fees that were compared, very comparative to the other towns. So... Most of these aren't that bad, but they're, they're really reasonable. Have you had a chance to look at the actual orders? Take a look at it, or?
I do, I do. Is that enough? Well, except that there was one correction that needs to be made. It's a, under fire inspection approvals, on second page.
Yep.
This would be town warrant 77.
77, yeah. The other thing is, we didn't put the actual effective date in there, because obviously, until it gets voted on by, not only us, but also by the public at town meeting for ordinance modification, that's going to date eventually.
It's essentially like permits, it's sort of building permits.
Yep.
Do I also have a?
Yep.
Okay. More motion, move it on?
Yep.
Make a motion, move to propose new ordinance, ordinance 136. Do you need to not? Okay. Five motions requesting a special, to town meeting.
I do say that after we, if we do propose this forward, it would have a review by the attorney, and then we can actually go forward with the date and once the clarification.
So, you made a motion to move forward?
Lower to a town meeting.
Okay. I'll, I'll, sorry. Set the date and another time.
Yep. Set the date and another time. Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. So, the next one up is our current procurement policy. You see on a separate page, I have noted a few things that are there of concern. My concern is, so if goods and services that are in the town budget will not be subjected to review in appropriate approval, whether it's selectmen, via vote of the meeting. You're looking at this as, when do we actually go to board of selectmen with it? When do we not? Because there are some phases of that that you don't. But I want to make sure that it's very clear, so that everybody knows exactly when to go to board of selectmen.
I had a question that recently, because it was under $10,000.
Yep.
And so, why are we voting on it?
Yep. I mean, you do want to make the public aware of what's going on. Usually, it would be in a budget area within alignment. But I think it would be appropriate for us to at least make this something that we can consider documenting as part of the procurement policy. So, you notice here on this one, I said discuss a further review. And further review, that's really what we probably need to do, is, you know, take a look at it, see what's going on, and bring it back to the next meeting. And I would say that that would require us to say, table this until the next meeting.
Just so you know, I like that, wait, straight on. I make a motion.
I just want to make sure that we, and that way, when it's available for the public, they can read and know exactly what it's supposed to be.
I make a motion to move this to, I mean, table this until next meeting.
Any other discussion? And I will clean up the language of it.
Okay.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Now, item four, which was added, discuss requests from the board of police commissioners for access for attorney seats. If you gentlemen wouldn't mind coming forward, I mean, the chair here. So, there's a couple of questions that I have. I thought about it, I know you called me today, so it's possible to talk about it. Absolutely. Question that I, a couple of questions I would have would be, do you have something written from the board of police commissioners with your, with the request? Or is it just coming forward? Because I'd like to see something written to say, here's what we want it for, why, and how much, because there has to be a limit.
So, I did, well, we're allowed $1,000.
That's what I wanted to ask you about. You're allowed it in your own board of police commissioners' budget, or the police budget?
As far as I understand, now, listen, I don't know all the technical crap, because that's not me, but we're allowed, we're allowed $1,000 a year for legal advice. So, here's, here's what it's all of it is. The people at the town vote, I'm going to speak on their behalf a little bit. The people of this town voted us in to do a job that we wanted to do. For us, and whether they liked us or not, so I have people that don't like me, vote for me, because they know I'm going to do what I say I'm going to do. No, they're not going to be sweeping away. And we're here to represent the people at the town, that's why they voted. So, we feel that for us to do our job better, we need to know more about what our job really is. Because it seems like there's times in the commission when we're saying, we read the state's.
Statutes.
Statutes clear on it. And they say that we're, we have sole authority on that. And then we're told, no, we don't, because either the union, or the town statute, or the Tom Tar. And then all of a sudden, the next time, there's something we don't think we have any authority on, and we're voting on it. We're, we're not representing the people that voted us correctly. We don't know where, you know, we wanted to walk, we wanted to run with it. That's what we were voted in for. We need, we need the tools for our job. We're asking, I don't know how many other, you know, I don't know how many other committees or commissions come up here and ask you for more knowledge on what your job is. But for us to do our job right, this is what we're asking for.
And on side note, meeting a subcommittee of the police commission right now, to try to write our own rules and regulations for the committee. This is also helpful at the same time, be able to clarify some of those rules and regulations, and get part of the statute, and what they mean to us, and how we utilize them in those rules and regulations clarified by what we would like to do is use a law enforcement attorney, someone who's, that's, that's their purview, is law enforcement, police departments and how they work, and their knowledge of the statutes and other commissions in the state. That's who we want to work with specifically, with an attorney outside of the town, whether it be with the police, the town side, or whatever, to give us a non-bias down the road, this is what your job is as a police commissioner.
Okay. We, yeah. Couple of questions I have. You mentioned $1,000. I think that was a discussion we had, and we talked about the boards and commissions line of, you have a police commission total allocation of $1,200, but that's supposed to be going towards the secretary unless you decide something else.
That legal notice.
Yeah. Yeah. In case you have a legal notice, which.
All right. So, I mean, I don't know, we, we just asked for what we were told we could ask for. I mean, I would like to, I guess I was just on the assumption that we had $1,000 for legal fees, or legal counsel.
The only thing I've ever seen in the budgets where you just wrote, red in the boards and commissions, every board and commission gets a certain amount budgeted for their legal notices, like planning and zoning. They have to put out a lot of legal notices board of selectmen do.
Listen, I also, I also offered to pay for it myself. But they told us I couldn't.
Could you find that out, where, when you got that knowledge?
We'll try, and also with this and Ryan also.
And also, I want to mention, planning and zoning, they have training courses. Have you looked into any training courses that were, that would be available for you as board?
There's nothing.
There's nothing? There's something? So, you would have to go.
We also, I, we, I also, but Penn has also reached out to, we'll go ahead and.
Connecticut Police Commissioners Association, on multiple occasions over a couple of years, they've never returned my emails. So, we haven't been able to reach out to them. We're just trying, we're just trying to clarification, do our job better. And again, what I said before, we're doing the guidelines and rules for the commission. This is looking forward down the road. But we're not there anymore. Someone new has voted in, much like I did a few years back, my first, when I got appointed to the, to the board of police commissioners. What's my job? What's my role here? Where's our authority? What are we supposed to do? We should be able to hand somebody, this is, thanks for joining us. Thanks for being voted in. This is what you need to do.
Basically, you want to hire a lawyer.
Yes.
To do a work.
And go back to what you asked, something in writing. I mean, if you look at the last month's, or this month's police commission minutes, you'll see in there that the board of police commissioners voted to ask the board of selectmen for this. So, I think this is an example of a written request, except that it's the police commission.
Yes and no, only because we need to know the details. In other words, you're asking for money, I need to know how much. And you go along with that, I can show you that, like, you have like $900 left. I don't know what you want to do with the secretary, but, but to get her paid for her hours of work, that's, that would tighten in that. The other thing is, in legal fees, we're down to 21.65% of that. I think we can actually squeeze it up to the end of year, what's there. Question would be now, what do we get the extra money for, whatever you're looking for?
Well, say somebody donated money to the police to, for the police commission to get legal advice.
And to what?
I really don't think they're asking for it, one reason, well, that's all I'm saying. I just think that we're looking for knowledge.
It's just a matter of where to get it and how much.
All right.
If you, if you go to a lawyer, find a lawyer, and say, you know, ask, how much training would you need to give us?
Well, $1,000, we're going to get about three hours. So, we're going to try to get all our doubts in our own, get all our questions that we can possibly think of before going into this meeting. And either driving to Stratford, Stanford, wherever, wherever it is, so we can get our full, there's not, it's not them traveling us.
Actually, they'd have to, because the five of you, even three of you would constitute a meeting.
Well, yeah.
Well, we don't necessarily have to have all three of us go.
Correct.
Okay.
You have representation there.
So, I have a couple of other questions related to what you've done so far. You've been working on a subcommittee, and I think Colleen was also on there.
Yeah.
Is the representation that you've gotten there giving you at least a head start? Now you know what you want to ask another attorney?
Yeah.
And they want to use you down there, but I figured that's what you were looking for?
Yeah. There's some of that, but I think most of this, us asking attorney for our, secondarily, is going to come to help us with the rules and guidelines. But I don't think that's primarily what we're looking for.
Yeah. So, I would love to see it in writing, so we know exactly what you're looking to do, any amounts, because again, it's real tight.
So, let me ask you this, so since we only, you only set up for your, to some of what you ask for. I don't know what we can ask for.
Well, I don't, I don't know if, you're saying you have a $1,000 legal fee budget somewhere?
So, I'm all, that's the way I understood it from a chief.
The boards and commissions, he, he just said he downed it, whatnot?
But I mean, that was, that's how we set up initially, is for your recordings. But I mean, that was, that's how we set up initially, is for your recording secretary to make sure that they get covered for their fees, for their services.
And any newspaper notices, stuff like that.
I mean, so far, what you've done is, we've taken your request through our attorney, through the attorney fees, so if you're looking to do something a little different, I just need clarification, that's all. I don't wanna make it so, yeah, let's give 5,000, because that's...
And, I'll ask you, if there's money left over in their budget there, could it be a line and transfer, so that they can do this?
Yes, so we've done that before with that commission, where they wanted to utilize the money that they had left over to give to, like, a scholarship fund, part of a scholarship funds, but with 900, and only two months ago, you should have about, maybe 750, 800 between there, left over?
Some better than nothing.
All right, so if you can do that, that we very much appreciate it, and again, I think I phrased the, adding it on to discuss the request, so we can actually table this for our next meeting, and actually make it a discuss act. Is that okay?
Thank you.
So with that, we're gonna table for the next meeting.
Make a motion to table to the next meeting?
And on the other discussion, here you none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. On the other, and I mentioned it before already, we do have tomorrow night, 7:30. 7:30, you got Board of Police Commissioners meeting tomorrow at 6?
It's a doubt, yes.
So you got a long night. You got that, there's other meetings to go to, and then back here for the town meeting at 7:30, and that is for the resolution for WPC to forward with their $4 million request for the new generator and the two secondary clarifier tanks at the North Freedom Plant. So that's tomorrow. Then on the first, that is in front of the three boards for the town, it's a, it's a public hearing to discuss budget issues, and then the second of the month is the follow-up. So, I would ask, this time, seeing as we're here right now before the meeting ends, if you have a problem with this meeting, a special meeting for the second immediately following the finance meeting, then we can actually add items, if we have any items to cut.
So, so they want a, may second, or do you want to really know?
I just wanted to know if it's okay, because then I can actually, instead of calling you guys, I can actually speak, but, so it makes it, so that it'll be, May 2nd immediately following the public hearing. We don't have to make a motion at any time, because this is a special meeting, we can call it as such, and I know the Board of Education's gonna probably get the same thing. Okay? Anything else?
Yeah, one thing, last meeting, you kind of challenged me.
On?
You put out some projects, and you asked which ones go to PNC, which ones go to engineering. So I did some homework, and I'm just gonna give you some, three or four of them, probably four of them, I don't know about the 6,000, yeah, or 10, would have to go to PNC, eight of them would need engineering, three of those are already budgeted, two are, projects are already completed, says three that need plants. So out of those 19 projects you gave us to look up, four of them need to go to PNC, which some are already did, or are already done, two of them are already done, and eight would need energy, two, three would need energy.
Would that need to go in front of PNC? That's our sewer project.
Oh, I'd have to look it up. I go to...
I'm asking, do you think it should?
Um, probably.
Okay.
It's construction, a new tank, right, that's what, that's what you're talking about?
So we apply for a grant, and town people vote, town peoples vote for it, which is governing body, right? And then we come back in front of the PNC, and three people can say no.
So my grants are different, I don't, that's why I say I have to, I would have to agree to that. This is what happened last, last meeting, you hit us with this, and I put PNC right then, and we thought the majority would have to go to PNC, but it turns out they own four of them, so I don't know, I can check into it if you like.
Sure.
See if it's...
So, anything else? Here you none, motion to adjourn?
So...
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
7:35.
That the public's not aware of previous, is there a possibility that you can open public comment at the end, just in case there's something you wanted to ask? Because like tonight with the police commission, I would have loved to have follow-up input and some questions from the public on that, so, just because it's a surprise to the public, that's in addition to the agenda.
It was a surprise to me until today.
I'm sure, I'm sure.
But, you know, in the other, we get down to the, it says other, I don't mind people standing up and saying, you know, I have a question, that's fine.
Okay, great.
Okay, I've done that before, so I don't have a problem with that.
Just because it's public observation, attending a lot of meetings over the years, a lot of our board members, because they are voted, they're not really aware of what their job is coming in, so I'm free with the police commission on that, and as ex officio, you can help them with that, and I am for money coming from the fund account to better train the members of our board, so that they better serve our community. If we're giving exponential raises every year to town employees, I'd like to see people that are serving us be better educated in their duties.
Yeah, unfortunately, there is a limitation.
That was my info.
There's a limitation, like we talked about, the State Police Commission, state, base state board, you're not gonna get too far with them, unfortunately, and they can be the great help to all the towns and municipalities, because if they're the ones who are guiding you, obviously, they've been through this before, I wish they would. I just don't, I just wanna see what the limit would be, because some boards and commissions, like PNC, we have a way to go and get training and certifications, half of the fact, but some boards don't have anywhere to turn to at all.
Because anyway, like for the Board of Finance, I've actually found where other towns actually have instruction on how their board members, once they get see how their board of finance operates, and what they're supposed to be doing, so, yeah, I'm all for that.
Okay. So at this time, we're gonna start the WPCA meeting for April 24, 2023, and that's now called Board of, we'll call.
All right, can I?
Kevin Cunningham, Item C approved, it's from WPCA meeting dated March 27, 2023.
August 8, 10.
Oh, yes.
Good time, good time.
We started our meeting at 7:37. Thank you. You should also have in your packet, April 10th, so I understand a motion to do the conditions, so we'll move that to WPCA meeting date April 10th, and also inclusive of that, March 37th. Your motion?
I'll make a motion to add April 10th to Item C.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so we have those two now.
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for March 27th and April 10th, 2023.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Public comment? Okay. New business, discuss and approve contractor bids of WPCA generator and transfer switch. In your packet, you will see that there were three bids, I wanna be as transparent as possible here, what happened was, we had a little bidder, problem with that was a little bidder didn't have certain specs in their bid, and they were the ones that brought it to our attention, and they're the ones who made the modifications, and know what it cost. So, it really is helpful, if you have what the bid really is, and what the paperwork will match to it, so...
That's why they sent it again?
Yeah.
On the 17th, okay.
And that's why I wanted to put it in the packet, so you can see that there was, and they, they knew that they were incomplete in their bid, but only because of numbers that were needed, because you can't have certain things going in there without a certain hardware, so they realized that. So we did have the three bids for the bid generator, Hanukkah Power, Thompson Electric, AC/DC Industrial Electric. Some questions?
No questions. I'll make a motion to approve the bid of AC/DC Industrial Electric LLC for $35,893.91 for the WPCA generator and transfer switches.
Any other discussion? Here you none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Just as a point of reference, for people who ask, well, what else has to be done in the sewer department, or stuff like this, where were you guys? Can I ask you, what is this one for?
Dog tracking on my home station. I'll make a motion, move adjourned?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
At 7:41.